We're good to go when you're ready. Still got a minute, though.
Is? Six thirty? Uh, so, um, the Nahat Board of Selectmen meeting of April second twenty twenty five is now in session at six thirty P M. Um, we have, um, a number of opening comments which I will read, uh, resident parking stickers for twenty twenty five right now available at nahat.org. Sticker purchased March first through June thirtieth are fifteen dollars each stickers purchased July first through December thirty first are twenty dollars each and. Last year with some confusion, you only need to buy one sticker. It's just this price structure is incentivizing to buy it in the first half of the year. Uh, there's a P T O Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April fifth. It's this Saturday. Uh, at three P M. At the Flash Road Park. That sounds fun. There's a rain date uh for Sunday, April sixth. Uh, annual town election is Saturday, April twenty six. Polls open at seven A M. It closes at seven P M. At the town hall. Early voting is April twenty second through April twenty fourth, nine A M. To one P M. At the town hall. Um, that is, um, school vacation week, so. Uh, people want to keep that in mind. Um, some people might be away, and if that's the case. Um, absentee ballots will be available at town hall, uh, starting approximately April tenth, according to the clerk. Um, the annual town meeting is Saturday, May seventeenth. Twenty twenty five at two thirty P M. At the town hall. Visit the town meeting page at hot dot org for more information. Annual dog licenses are due back to or were due back to the town clerk by April first twenty twenty five. A twenty dollar late fee will be added for any licenses received after April fifteenth. Um, scholarships are available. This is college scholarships. So visit the scholarship page at a hot dot org for more information. Um, especially you want to encourage people to apply for the Charles Kelly, uh, one thousand dollar scholarship. Easy to do. So, um, anyone that has a high school senior moving on to college. I should visit the scholarships page at. Um, there is a cultural council concert, um, the smack dabs. Sunday, April thirteenth twenty twenty five at two P M. The main hall of. So it's, uh, Sunday the thirteenth in town hall, smack dabs. Uh, metal recycling pickup, uh, metal white goods, TVs, computer recycling, et cetera. Is the last Saturday of each month from April twenty sixth to October twenty fifth. From eight A M. To twelve P M. Noon behind the D B W garage. Resident sticker is required. These may apply. Visit the D B W page at hot dot org for more information. Um, curbside leaf pickup is starting soon, starting on Mondays on April twenty eighth. Um, for the week of Memorial Day, um, in late May, it'll be a Tuesday pickup. These must be in biodegradable bag only in curbside pickup by seven A M. No plastic bags, no open barrels, roots, root balls or branches. And just as a reminder, at the compost area. Uh, no, plastic bags are allowed either. I noticed several plastic bags down there, uh, this week. Don't do that. Uh, swim. Spring beach cleanup is going to be Sunday, May fourth, twenty twenty five, starting at eleven A M. Volunteers will gather at the Lowlands Parking Lot. That's your beach parking lot. You go to short beach or doggy beach for cleanup bags will be provided, and we suggest volunteers bring gloves. Um, I need the market by the sea. Um, the twenty twenty five season is quickly becoming a nice tradition here in town. Um, there's three scheduled uh this summer. Um, Saturday, June twenty first, July nineteenth and August sixteenth and September twentieth. So that's four. Uh, from ten A M. To one P M. At Flat Road Park. More information or to become a vendor, visit the market page and hot dot org or email K Taylor at. Um, additionally, there is a, um. Breakfast at the Village Church, um, this coming Friday. That is April fourth. Uh, at eight A M. And, um, candidates for selectmen will be on hand and, uh. Sure happy to introduce themselves to anybody that wants to attend that breakfast. Everyone is welcome. Uh, Gene or Rob, do you have any additional open comments before we move on?
No, I just, uh, kind of a reminder here or something to bring it about. The, um, plastic bags. Did we ever make a decision? On whether we were going to? Terminate the use of plastic bags?
Yeah, nine non-biodegradable bags are now banned in the hunt. Uh, via via the meeting vote.
Was your effective date?
I think it was. Well, I I don't remember.
There was, there it, there was a, there was a sunset in that to give. Local businesses the opportunity to, uh. Transition over to not, you know, use up their existing supply and switch over to non-plastic bags. But that date. Has definitely come and gone, so they they all should be non-plastic bags. At this point. If you're, if you're, if you're encountering anything different, let us know. And we'll, um, talk to the business.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Robbie, okay. All right. So we're gonna move on to, um, new business. Uh, we're gonna vote to approve some, uh, selected meeting minutes. Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board of selectmen vote to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from March fifth, twenty twenty five and March nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
A discussion on those meeting minutes. Uh, the only thing I'll say is thank you for Kristen to for giving us up to date. Uh, on. On approving these many. Excuse me, meeting minutes, um. Okay, roll call vote for meeting minutes.
Jean Canty, I.
Rob Tibor.
Josh Andrew, hi. Um, under ongoing business, we're gonna vote. To open and close the warrant of the annual town election.
Is that in your backup? I'm like looking through. I'm looking through.
It is, and I I don't know why that's being opened. Uh, was this, um? Was this adding the, uh, article?
Yeah, yeah. So we do have to have that on there, um.
I don't see the. The actual words in the backup.
Let me, uh, let me, let me pull this up. Hold on one second.
So this is, um, in addition to the, uh, elections to the various boards and committees. Um, there is also a, um, ballot. Question which Tony is hunting for.
So Dan, you you might have to help me a little bit with this live.
Okay.
Because, uh, so I'm gonna pull up the. This is the warrant that we voted on last week. And I have the language, though, from Diane that we voted on. A voted, the selectman voted to. Add this language to the annual town election a few selectman meetings ago, but it does. I believe it does need to be stated on this warrant. And, um, the vote language, I'm going to. Pace right here. Maybe I should just put a, uh. Ballot. Question.
Yep.
We looked at this, um, this warrant for the town elections one or two meetings ago, but this particular ballot question was missing from that. The document at that time. So this is the ballot question that will also appear on the town. Uh, annual elections. And we've talked about this before, uh, we talked about this, I'm sure, at the last meeting. Which is increasing the term for the treasurer collector for one year to three years. Which is something that, uh, was voted on at town meeting, but now we have to.
Does that look good to you, Dan?
I can't read it. So small.
Speak up. Here we go. Ballot question. Vote to.
Okay, hold on. I'm gonna turn my screen up. This is gonna look weird. Hold on.
Right here.
All right. Vote to change articles for senior town to increase term of. Yeah.
All right.
Actually, I would say whether whether to change if it's a ballot. Quite the question is more whether should we whether to change.
Well, this is, this is the exact language that. We took a motion on. Um, about a month ago. The selectman had to do a separate vote just to approve that this would be to the annual town election ballot. So I pulled up that motion. This is what I heard on that that day. So I figure we gotta be consistent.
All right. Well, it gives notice as to what the subject matter is, and it's it's clear. So let's find them.
Okay. Okay.
What is this motion? So that's, um, that's the change to the. Uh, it, uh, excuse me, to the, uh, annual town election. Uh, warrant, um.
So did you guys? Did you guys? Motion and vote to open the warrant yet?
Uh, I think we haven't. We made the motion yet.
I don't think there was a vote.
So I would just take the same. I would take. You should have, do you? You should have a motion in your back.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't, I don't think we read the motion yet. So I'll do that. I moved that the board of selectmen execute the warrant for the annual town election to take place. Oh, that's not the right. Uh. Excuse me, uh. Used by that motion. It's a motion to execute the warrant, and the next one is. Open the town warrant.
All right. So what you, what we should do is we should follow the same process that we do for. The town meeting warrant. So what what you'll first do is make a motion to open. The warrant for annual town election and then vote on that and then.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so, uh, I move this board of selectmen, uh, open the warrant for the annual town election. Period.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? So the purpose of opening this warrant is to make the change that Tony just shared on the screen. About extending the, uh. Question of extending the, um, treasurer's term from one to three years. Any further discussion? Well, this is opening, sorry. All right. So we can roll, we can vote on opening, uh, roll call vote.
Jean Canty, I.
Rob Tibor.
Josh Andrew, mine. Okay, so it is now open.
All right. So in with it being open, what we're, what we're doing is adding this ballot question to the warrant. It wasn't on there last week. Um, with this addition, which again was voted on by town meeting last year. Uh. Now this warrant is accurate to what residents will see on the ballot. And now I would. Ask you make a motion to close the warrant for the annual town election. And send to the town clerk for posting.
Okay, move this for selectmen, close the warrant for the annual town election and, uh, forward to the town clerk.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need, do we need the, uh, the language for posting that that Tony mentioned?
Uh, no, that's okay.
Okay, right.
That's okay, then. Um, roll call vote.
Jean Canty, I. Rob Tibor.
Josh Andrew, mine. Okay, now we're moving on to the annual town meeting warrant. Um, we have a vote to open and close the annual town meeting war and send to the advisory and finance committee. Um. We have a motion on that.
I move the board of selectmen open the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Dan, seconded any discussion? You're seeing none. Roll call vote.
Jean Canty, I.
Rob Tibor.
Josh Andrew, I. Okay, so. What are we changing in the warrant?
All right. So I have it tracked change to show you the articles that we're adding to the warrant, um. First, we have language now in this placeholder of Article twenty related to the Coast Guard housing lots. Uh, this, this article is to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article twenty of the twenty twenty one annual town meeting. To now authorize the select board to sell the remaining unsold Coast Guard housing lots free of limitations on the number of offerings. Provided, however, that the remaining lots are sold by July one, twenty twenty nine. Subject to the other restrictions set forth in said twenty twenty one vote or take any other action relative thereto. Uh, so for background, the town meeting vote in twenty twenty one. Authorized us to sell these lots with a number of restrictions where this article will not. Um. Change any of those restrictions except for. It also stated that we shall sell. The twelve lots, uh, in two offerings over a two-year period. We have completed our second offering, so we need authority for additional offerings. Uh, the, the real intent of this language to was to ensure that. Adjacent lots weren't sold to the same, uh. Buyer to reduce construction congestion. Uh, now where we are with our, with the current sale of the lots, it's not really a concern. And it really doesn't make sense to limit the number of offerings that we can put out. We want to be able to. Relist the unsold properties. As many times as we need to get them sold. On the time limit, it said a two, in a two-year process. That clock started when we did our first offering, which was September of twenty twenty four. Which means under that limit, we have until September of twenty twenty six. I wanted to give the town an additional two years, which would bring you to September of twenty twenty eight. Uh, however, I felt that it was important to go. Beyond that to July of twenty one, twenty nine, so that if for some reason the town hasn't sold the unsold lots. By September of twenty twenty eight. You don't have to wait until annual town meeting in May of twenty nine or call a special town meeting. To ask for more time. So I felt, you know, by moving that date to the other side of the next annual town meeting. In the, in the unfortunate situation where we need to ask for more time. It allows the town to go to annual town meeting and make that request. But we also felt in discussions amongst ourselves, we felt it was important to keep an end date. So that the town stays aggressive with selling the lots instead of no end date at all. But we don't know, we, it's hard to predict the future as far as. The economy and the housing market. And as you know, we still have one property that is occupied, that we're going through a process. Uh, with that. Once it's vacated, we'll still have to demo the property, remove the underground oil tank, and then. Uh, prepare it for sale. Uh, additionally, where we are today with the twelve lots. Uh, we've out of. Out of the eleven that we've put up for sale, we have. Seven. Sold. Three under agreement and one awarded. So that leaves lot number five. Which had didn't receive any bids and lot number twelve, which is still occupied. So this article is going to allow us to. Uh. Continue the process as dictated by the motion from twenty twenty one, uh, after town meeting. And and attempt to sell lot five, uh, and lot twelve when it's ready for sale. Any questions on that?
So Tony, this, this, uh, this article doesn't anticipate any changes in the, in the practice or procedures we've been using in order to. Dispose of these, these properties. Uh, this is just opening a window or enlarging the window of opportunity. Uh, the, the effort, the, the amount of effort demonstrated over these past few months will continue at the same rate. Is that correct?
Correct. Okay, correct. All the other, uh, directions made by. The twenty twenty one town meeting limitations or restrictions, however you want to refer to them, remain in place. There's still a twenty five percent floor area ratio, uh, floor area. Uh, ratio restriction in the deed. The lots are still the same. All of that's the same. Uh, we just need authority. To put additional offerings out on the street, and we need more time. Potentially.
Very good.
So just, um.
Um, Tony, given. The fact that we have seven sold. Two to sell and and one still occupied. Just a question, but is it necessary to extend it out to twenty nine?
Well. I can't, I don't know when lot number twelve will be vacated and prepared for sale. It's hard to predict, uh, when that will occur. And but if this article passes, we'll be putting lot number five back on on the street. Uh. As soon as we feel it's. As soon as we can. You know, bar, I, 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 I only hesitate with that a little bit because. The current. Real estate market is somewhat being impacted by things that are occurring at the federal level. So you want to take that into effect. Uh, you also want to look at the timing of when that lot will go for sale relative to the real estate market. Um, but our intention is to have lot five back out on the street after town meeting. Uh, should they, should town meeting approve this article? We'll put Article five right back out on the street and try and sell it. And then. Um, you know, we continue the process of trying to get lot twelve ready to go.
Yeah.
Does that answer your, your question?
Yeah.
Most, the short answer to your question, Gene, is I don't, I don't want to run into a. September of twenty six and not have lot twelve ready for sale. And not be allowed to put it up. For sale because the town meeting article limited us to two years. So I want to just give us the extra time to. To make sure that we have it and we can. Put it up for sale when it's ready.
Okay.
And then just to be explicit, let's say, um, so you have seven soul, three are under agreement. If we assume those three. Um, that are under agreement. That the purchase of sales is completed. Um, that will happen prior to annual town meeting. So by the time town meeting rolls around. This article applies only to lots five and twelve, which is the occupied. Uh, property. So, um, it's, it's not a whole scale change. It's presumably will be lot five and lot twelve.
Mm hmm.
And you know, with lot five, you know, we could in theory drop the minimum bid or something like that. Uh, to make that accelerate that process, but. Um, with lot well, which is still occupied, um, we don't have that, um. We don't have that liberty hence the, the July twenty ninety.
Correct.
I, I think I was just looking for some. Well, not for some, but to continue the sense of urgency we've had. In selling these, and I'm sure this will. This will not, um, change that at all.
Correct. At the. The, the key thing here is that the. The number of offerings and the time by which we're, we have to sell these is restricted by a town meeting vote. And I don't want to be, I don't want to get to September of twenty six and, um. You know, need to call a special town meeting or wait until May of twenty seven to ask for more time at that point. And I, we need more offering. We need the ability for more offerings today because lot five hasn't sold yet. So we might as well just deal with both issues at this town meeting. And of course, the, the sense of urgency will remain. We, we want to get them sold. Uh, as soon as possible.
Okay.
Uh, so. Article twenty two and twenty three are veteran exemptions. These were made eligible, uh, by the Hero Act. Signed into law in late twenty twenty four. Uh, this, these come to us from our town assessor and our veteran service agent. The first article is, uh, allows for a COLA adjustment to the exemption amount that veterans are. Eligible for. So it's tied to, um. It's tied to the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index. So it increases the amount of the exemption by the COLA adjustment on an annual basis. The second article allows municipalities to increase the amount of the exemptions. Uh, up to a hundred percent. So our current exemptions. For veterans. Are. Six hundred and fifty dollars for twenty two A through F, a thousand dollars for. Twenty two A, fifteen hundred for twenty two B. Uh, seventeen fifty for twenty two C. Just double checking here, twenty two A, B, C, E is twelve fifty and clause F. Is a, uh, full exemption. So what this does is essentially. Allows us to double those exemption amounts for veterans that are eligible. What the V S O and the assessor did was, uh. An analysis on the number of veterans that are eligible for those exemptions today. Uh, projected what these changes would, how they would impact. Uh, the, those, the total of those exemptions and what, how it would impact the overlay account. And we feel comfortable, uh, that we can afford to provide this as additional assistance to, uh, our veterans.
So, um. It's not exactly clear from these articles, but they, this is exemptions on their real estate tax, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I don't see that identified in either one of these articles, but that's what it's for.
Yeah, you'd have to look into the actual general law, chapter fifty nine, to see what it authorizes these exemptions for. So then, uh. Because we added these in here, that we got some renumbering, we've added in the CPC articles. Um, I believe you've seen these, but do you want me to go through them?
That'd be good.
So the first article is ninety two hundred, nine thousand, two hundred forty three dollars. Uh, for flag poles at Veterans Park. The second article is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The second article is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of the roof at the Nahat Life Saving Station, the principal dwelling. The next article is forty thousand dollars, uh, for replacing roofs uh, to, at, these are Nahat Housing Authority properties. The article B is thirty-nine, three, forty-five for the continued work, uh, at Bailey's Hill. This is vegetation management. This one, I believe, uh, support or applied for by the Open Space Committee. I should have said that from the beginning. Uh, the Veterans Park Flagpole applied for by Dana Sheehan, I believe, representing the American Legion. Um, not sure who applied for the Life Saving Station one. C is obviously from the Housing Authority. D is from the Open Space Committee. E is our, is from the town of Nahat, uh, from uh, through Zach and I to the CPC is for, uh, fifty thousand dollars for uh, playground equipment for the Pleasant Street Playground. F is, it comes from the Nahat Library. This is seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, for structural repairs. Um, in, and it also, this article's complicated because it does three, three things, but it's essentially it's for structural repairs, uh, and um, upgrades to electrical and fire alarm system. This article is actually five hundred thousand is borrowed through the CPC. Two hundred thousand is appropriated for free cash, which is subject to the approval of Article Six earlier in the warrant where we are rescinding a free cash appropriation from last year. And then it's paying down the debt from a previous bond payment that was for the library. Uh, G is ten thousand, uh, the, the, the rest of these are standard articles related to putting money into the reserves according to the CPA, uh, the Community Preservation Act. Um, and then paying down bond payments in I, in J, in K. And then we have the set aside and then, uh, M is uh, actually it's unspent CPC funds from previous articles, bringing them back into, uh, the reserve account for the CPC. Any questions on any of those? I, I mean, Lynn would be better to answer specific questions on any of these articles. I believe she'll be at the Finance Committee tomorrow night speaking to them.
No, I, I think the, the only thing I see there is a real plus is anytime they've asked for money or money is requested, it's, there's always a background, a, a, a source from which it comes and, and that's always good to know.
Okay. And then lastly, we've added Article twenty-six. You may recall earlier in the year, uh, we had a request to abandon an unused utility, utility easement on Christopher Drive. Uh, that utility easement that is unused by the town actually goes through uh, three, five, seven, and nine Christopher Drive. So there's four properties there that have an easement on their deed that the town, it's, it's just old language that the town doesn't utilize prior to Christopher Drive, Christopher Drive being developed or subdivided, I should say. Uh, so when we went through that process, we were, we were acceptable to abandon the easement, but we've discovered that it would require a town meeting article. Uh, the request came from five Christopher Drive. Um, so my, in speaking with Dan and speaking with Zach, because we don't have use for a three, seven, and nine either, we're adding that to the article. And then I'll be reaching out to the residents at three, seven, and nine to let them know that we're including this. And, um, if they, if they desire not to be included, we can, we can, um, not include them in the, at, at town meeting. But wanted to make sure we put it on the warrant for now, uh, so that they could be included if they wanted to be.
Which having an easement on one doesn't really benefit anyone, right? You can't, you know, it has to be of any use to the town and, you know, it turns out it's not of any use to the town on any of these lots, so. I, I think it seems hard to believe someone would decline the, the offer, but good, good to reach out to them.
And I can pull up, uh, let me pull up a picture real quick just to show you what we're talking about. So this is Christopher Drive. We have a drainage, we have, uh, a utility easement that runs from Nahat Road and the easement actually carries through these properties, but what I've drawn here is not exactly where the utility is now, but essentially it comes through this property off of Nahat Road, three twenty-one, cuts through a corner of eleven Christopher Drive and now goes, it's under the roadway and then connects back here at the bottom of Christopher Drive heading to War Street. So that's, these are the four properties that, you know, have the easement on their deed, but we don't utilize it, don't need to utilize it. We feel we'll never, we'll never need it in the future. Happy to get, happy to get rid of it or abandon it.
One at the very top where it just kind of nicks there, looks like it just sort of nicks, are they included?
They are not. We do, our, our utility does come through here and through their property. All right?
All right.
So that, that's, uh, those are all the changes to the warrant.
Any discussion on those changes before we make a motion to close the town, uh, annual town meeting warrant? All right. So I move the board selectmen vote to close the annual town meeting warrant and send to the advisory finance committee for their review.
Seconded.
Okay, motions have been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing the scene, non-roll call vote.
Gene Canty, I. Rob Tibbey.
Josh Andrew White.
We can skip the next one. We have no changes to the omnibus budget.
All right, back to Coast Guard having an update.
Uh, okay, so I can give another update here quickly. Uh, if you go to nahat.org and, uh, show you if you're, you go to nahat.org and click on the picture on the right for the Coast Guard Housing, it'll bring you to our Coast Guard Housing Sale, uh, page, which has uh, we've been keeping it up to date as we've gone through the process. Uh, and it's in, it starts with offering two because that's where we are today. Offering one results are here right below it. But as you can see, uh, for originally lot ten, we had three bids, but then we didn't, we, the deal fell apart. We didn't get to purchase and sale agreement, so we put it out, back out to bid. Lot eight has been sold. Uh, lot six, I signed the closing documents today, so I may be updating this page, uh, tomorrow. Uh, to say sold. Um, lot two, we have a purchase and sale agreement. Lot four, uh, has been awarded and so has in, uh, lot ten. Actually, I need to update this. I believe we have a purchase and sale agreement for lot four as well. So we have one, lot eight is sold. As of tomorrow, lot six will be sold as well. And if you scroll down here, you can see lot one was sold, three, seven, nine, eleven. Five was part of the first offering, uh, was rebid a second time. And and then we put it in the second offering and it was re, it was bid, no, no bids and then rebid a second time and no bids again. So it's actually been put on the market four times. Uh, so we'll, we'll keep at it. It is one of, lot five is this corner lot here. It is a tougher lot, uh, for building because of the shape and the restrictions from the setbacks. So that one month, we might need to revisit, uh, the, the minimum bid, but we'll work on that after town meeting if we get the authority to do additional offerings.
Was unable to do the mental math, but if you include everything that's, um, under agreement, you, you happen to remember what the total is?
Um, so under agreement plus sold. Um, I can just do the math real quick here. So you're at, oh, now I'm on the spot.
Yeah, never mind. I, I, it's okay. I, I had been keeping a, a, a mental tally in my head, but with the recent activity, I've lost track. Big number.
So for offer two, we're at two point, two million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and one. So call it two, and then if you add in what we did in uh, offering number one. We're, we're, we're over five million. I, I messed up on my math a little bit, but between the closed, the sold lots and the ones that are under agreement uh, and the ones that are awarded, you know, should all of those sell, we're going to be over five million dollars.
Quite nice.
And, and just as a reminder there, we had uh, one point eight six to pay off. We paid that off. Then we had one point three to pay off. So with these, with these lots that were, that were, uh, closing on now, we'll have that paid off as well. Anything above that uh, will be revenue in fiscal year twenty-five that drops to free cash for fiscal year twenty-seven use. And anything else that we're able to close on before the end of the fiscal year would get added to that. So uh, if this, if that article gets passed at town meeting, there's a thirty-day notice period for procurement required, um. And then it's like a thirty-seven day process from bid to closing. So it'll be it, it, it may be possible, it may not be possible to, to get lot five sold before the end of the fiscal year, but we'll try for it.
Yeah. So after paying up all the debts, the original bond and the and the one point three million, I see the net of one point nine million with two lots left to go, all that, another million, two point nine million profit ultimately, so.
Yeah, we, we were, that's, that sounds, that's about right. What we were projecting somewhere between two point five and three point five in, in additional revenue to the town.
So that's great.
Yeah.
Anything else on the Coast Guard housing?
No.
Okay. Our administrative reports next.
Uh, so we have, um, a lot of things going on. Obviously, we're in the, in the, in the, uh, busy days of prepping for town meeting. We had, um, a planning board meeting last night, uh, where the planning board spoke about the, uh, recommendation that they're going to be putting forward to the finance committee and to town meeting. We also, uh, Dan and I reviewed with the planning board potential floor amendments to their language, uh, that they, that's in their draft in accordance with the recommendations or comments that we received from the Attorney General's Office. So, uh, they voted on that. Now we're drafting those floor amendments and we're on schedule to potentially have all of that included in their recommendation, which will be included in the finance committee book, uh, for people to have before, uh, they go to town meeting. We have a finance committee meeting tomorrow night. Um, as I said, CPC, I believe, is the first on the agenda. Um, as for utility work, we have, we talked about it last week, but Willow Road stormwater work is, uh, under construction as we speak. Um, we are working with our, uh, engineers to um, uh, add change order to our existing contracts for stormwater work and for sewer repairs at, for, so that we can complete some necessary repairs at the bottom of Emerald Road. There's a section of our sewer main that needs to be repaired and there's, uh, stormwater repairs that need to be done in that very same area. Uh, we've, as you, as you know, we have, uh, been hearing from residents in the area about, uh, drainage issues um, in the Willow Road area, White Way, and recently in Emerald as well. So we've, I've connected, um, I've connected our stormwater engineer with a couple of the residents down there so that he could get a firsthand understanding of the issues that they're dealing with. And we're going to be including some, uh, design in the improvement in the stormwater work at the end of Emerald Road to satisfy or provide some relief to those issues. Uh, so we're, there's a lot of moving parts, uh, with being able to complete this work under our existing contract, subject to procurement law. And also, um, ensuring that we have the funding. We're using uh, two different funding sources for the stormwater work. We have local funding that we, uh, got authorized by town meeting to borrow for. On the stormwater, on the sewer work, we have SRF funds, which was also approved by town meeting, but it goes through that long-term loan program through DEP. So we're got a lot of moving parts there, but, uh, our, our goal is to get the lower, the end of Emerald Road where it, uh, meets Ocean Street and Willow. All that utility work, we want to get completed as soon as possible, so then we can get, uh, Emerald Road paved uh, this year. And we've met with our, um, engineers on the, on the scope of work for the paving project as well. Again, for, for that, we're hoping to, uh, repave the entirety of Emerald Road from spring to ocean, uh, reset the granite curbing, uh, repave the sidewalks and then add ADA compliant sidewalk ramps at the intersection of Emerald and Pond and at the end of Emerald where it meets Ocean Street. Um, so we're working, working to get those projects, uh, underway. Um, I mentioned the town hall ramp, uh, at our last meeting, we got approval from the Historical Commission. Uh, so we're working with, uh, Richard Smith, our historical building structural engineer. Uh, because the town has a preservation restriction on it, we had to go through the Historical Commission to get approval on that. We did that and now we're going to be working on putting together procurement documents so we can get that out on the street. But we won't do construction on that until the summer. We don't. We don't want to have any construction occurring during Election Day or Town Meeting. We also have a constant, uh, constantly working on, thank you to the residents. Who have sent in the, their scratch and magnet test results. Of their water service line coming into their home. Uh, they're coming in, we're getting a number of those. Uh, every day or so, and we're able to use that information to update our inventory. On the uh lead service line um project required by this, by the EPA. Uh, so thank you to those that are helping with that. We have, uh, next week, we'll be meeting with uh Wright Pierce. Uh, to talk about development of our procurement documents for our water meter replacement program. Um. And we are, we're continuing to work with our stormwater engineer for the next stormwater project. Which would, which will likely require us to go to the Conservation Commission and then bid out under a separate procurement. And a separate contract. That work will be related to White Way, improving the stormwater on White Way. Uh, diverting stormwater uh from getting to White Way at Pond, at the intersection of Pond. And White Way and also diverting water coming down from Ocean Street. At the Valley Road intersection as well. Um, right now, all water is heading towards the same low spot. So we're trying to design a system that'll provide some relief to that neighborhood. Um, and so that's, that's another big project on our list. And. That's all, I, I will stop there.
That's a lot of moving parts, Tony. Um. I don't know if you wanted to mention the exciting news we got earlier today.
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, so we received our executed. Uh, contract for the Short Beach Dune Hazardous Mitigation Grant. Uh, the, the um FEMA and MEMA signed off on their side, so now we have our grant, our contract in place. And we'll be, they reached out to schedule a kickoff meeting to talk with Trey, our coastal engineer. Uh, and I'm going to invite Chris and Kent, our conservation agent, to that meeting as well as Zach, of course. Uh, to figure out what the next steps are going to be on, on that project.
Yeah, I mean, that's really exciting news for anyone here on the Zoom or watching. The TV at home, you know, this is a three and a half million dollar grant and um. Really like to congratulate you, Tony, and the whole town for, you know, making this happen. It's. An amazing opportunity for, for Nahat and uh should provide a lot of protection of. Future storms.
Tony, how soon do you think that project will begin? From the drawing board on?
Well, we have, we have the section from Little Nahat to the Life Saving Station has been designed and permitted. What now we need to do is design and permit the remaining section from Little Nahat, um, from the Life Saving Station. To uh Antigo Way, basically, all the way, all the way down there, so uh to the other side of the beach. That, um. I, I believe that through that process, we should engage with the public. Because those are, those access points are the most used access points to the beach. And there's a number of different ways we can design those, and I think that the public is going to want to provide some input on that. Uh, so we'll have to figure out what the length of time of that public process is going to look like. Once we have that feedback and finalize the design, then we have to go through permitting. Uh, which may, you know, depending on what that design element is. What type of permitting it's going to require will heavily dictate the, the process. Uh, so. It could be, it could easily be a year before we get to permitting. And then actually procure and start a project. I wouldn't expect to see shovels in the ground. Until the. You know, honestly, I would say. Late twenty twenty six, early twenty twenty seven.
Thank you.
Tony, I just want to mention uh, uh, that uh. From what I can tell, uh, it looks like Zach and the, uh, the crew from the DPW have been doing a fantastic job at maintaining that stretch. In the condition that it's in, uh, they, they still keep things looking, looking squared up and, and uh, uh, you know. It'll look a lot better with the, uh, with the improvements from this grant, but they're, they're, they're doing a good job of holding the fort as it is.
They are. They're doing a great job and uh, the entire department there is, you know, they're in the uh. Transition season. Um, converting from uh winter operations to spring operations. Uh, and so they're out. Daily working on cleaning up a lot of these public areas from uh, you know, the. Impacts of the winter season and getting them ready for the spring. We have a, a lot of, you know, the Little League's going to be starting up soon. Other recreational programs are going to be starting up soon. Um, so they're, they're working hard to get all those. Properties ready to go and available uh for the upcoming activities, so. Give them a shout out for all the hard work they're doing.
Indeed.
Um, alright, next up is citizens comment. If anybody on Zoom all has. Comments or questions, uh, you may unmute yourself, state your name and address and make your comment. See anyone unmuting or raising their hand. Going once. Going twice. Okay, um, moving on, uh, we're going to adjourn to executive session. We won't be returning to o- open session. I'll make the motion and move to the board of selectmen vote to adjourn to executive session. Pursuant to general law, chapter thirty, section twenty one, A seven, to comply with or to act under the authority of. Any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements specifically to review non-disclosed executive session. Minutes pursuant to general law, chapter thirty, section twenty two, F and G. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of a public body. And I, the chair, do declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And we will not return to open meeting. Have a second, uh, any discussion. Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Gene Kent, D I.
Rob Tibbey.
Josh Andrew Mike. Uh, alright, thank you all. See you next time.
Good everyone.
Thank you all. Good night.